Davidic Kingdom. Now, it's not all praise. It's like David becomes king, but not without sorrows. So there's quite a few entreaties and laments in this first book, but there's also hymns of praise. And in fact, each one of these books, except one, the center one, will end with a hymn of praise. Okay? The second book is the continuation of the Davidic Kingdom. Again, there are eighteen Psalms of David, but now we also see the Levitical choir of the sons of Korah. So what happened is David, and this is somewhat from the Book of Chronicles, is David inaugurated the songs to be sung while the morning and evening sacrifice of incense was being offered in the temple. So while the high priest was inside the Holy of Holies, or before the Holy of Holies burned the incense for the morning and evening, the sons of Korah, or the Levitical choir, were standing on the steps of the women's court, singing the praises of God. So the sacrifice of praise was going on at the same time as the sacrifice of incense. And in fact, our liturgy of the hours, what are the two hinge hours and the most important hours? Are that morning and evening prayer. Okay? So lots and vespers, which echoes all the way back to the liturgical praise that David inaugurated in the temple in the beginning. Okay? So the sons of Korah, again contemporaries of David, or in the tradition of David. And then we see Psalm seventy-two that ends the book is the Psalm of Solomon, who built the temple. Okay? Now, the third book is the fall of David's kingdom. Okay? The fall and the exile of the people to Babylon. And this is the darkest and the shortest. Okay? And this is the one that, instead of ending with a psalm of praise, it ends with, if you would, a dirge or a lament. Okay? So we see the end of the monarchy. And in fact, Psalm eighty-eight is the darkest. All the other, all the other laments will end with a kind of an expression of hope, but Psalm eighty-eight ends with, "My one companion is darkness." Okay? And by the way, that's the psalm that we say Friday night for night prayer. It kind of reflects the agony of the garden. Okay? Okay? The fourth book is Psalm ninety to one hundred and six. And this is kind of like the wisdom of, well, why did David's kingdom fail? And then, kind of looking over it again, it says, "Well, who's really king of Israel is the Lord." So the Lord is God, or the Lord, God is king. And so, if you would, after the sufferings of the exile, this wisdom is born that God is our king, and David was the representative. Okay? Not the end of the kingdom, but God is the true ruler of Israel. And this is where we have the section on Moses, ninety-three through a hundred, on the Lord is king, Melch of Israel, or king of Israel. This is, this will end with hymns. And then Psalm one hundred and six and one hundred and seven kind of reviews salvation history from the Exodus to the present time. And it kind of just goes through like the wandering in the desert and things like that. And these songs are usually during Lent. Okay? As in Psalm one hundred and six and seven, you find them commonly in Lent. Okay? Now, our next, our last book is now the restoration. Israel is back in Egypt, or excuse me, back in Jerusalem. They've come back from exile. And so this book is universal praise. This is where you have the Songs of Ascent, which would be the Songs of Pilgrimage, as the pilgrims would be coming in three times a year to Jerusalem. Jerusalem's up on a hill, and you know, at Jericho, we're below sea level. And then as we climb up towards Jerusalem, we're traveling, I can't remember, in ten, in ten miles, you're traveling over a thousand feet in height. Okay? So it literally is an ascent. So as they turn the corner, the pilgrims would see the temple shining in the heights, and they would start singing the Songs of Ascent. And by the time they were finished with the Songs of Ascent, they were in the temple courtyard. Okay? So this is part of the pilgrimage to Jerusalem. And then you also have the Hallel, which would be sung at the Passover. And then also, again, more Davidic songs, praising God. And then Psalm one hundred twenty-seven is Solomon's psalm concerning the temple, right? "Unless the Lord builds the house, those who labor build in vain." Okay? So those would be, if you would, the liturgical songs are in that last one. And then, of course, there's the grand finale of praise, right? Psalm one hundred forty-five through one hundred fifty, it's one hymn after the other, with Psalm one hundred forty-nine again echoing the first psalm. And then Psalm one hundred fifty is like praising God in the new Jerusalem of heaven. Okay? So it's kind of an overarching buildup in the, or the patterns that we find in the Book of Songs. Okay? So that's kind of breaking it down into what's happening and what's the movement, general movement of the songs. Now, I'd like to look at the literary forms. So we've done a little history, we've done a little liturgy, and now we're going to do a little literature. Okay? So, if I can get it to work, there we go. Okay? So now, you know, different, different peoples have different, how do you say, poetry forms, right? Like the Japanese have the haiku. You have the, if I say it right, the iambic pentameter of Shakespeare, et cetera. Or you have the dog rule of Limerick, whatever you want to say, the rhyming of each sentence. But the Hebrew, the Hebrew way of getting the rhythm going is this Hebrew parallelism, which takes three forms. Now, it's much easier to study the Hebrew parallelism in, in the Book of Proverbs, because there are only two lines. You can easily discern the parallelism there. But in the case of the songs, it's a very sophisticated pattern that they're using. So the three, let's, let's look first at the three systems. And we see the first synonymous means the second verse is like the first. So just to borrow from the Proverbs would be, "A wise son is the joy of his father, and a pious son is the joy of his mother." Okay? So they're parallel. Now, antithetical would be the second verse will be opposite of the first. "A wise son is the joy of his father, but the mother of the nuns' love is always mourning." Okay? So, yeah, okay. Synthetic would be the second verse completes the first. These are usually similes or analogies. So like, this is one of my favorite, maybe it's my sick humor, but, "As a golden ring in a swine snout is a beautiful woman with a bad disposition." I just think it's funny. Or another one would be, "As a door on its hinges, the lazy man on his bed." Okay? So it's a kind of a metaphor that then is completed in the second one. Okay? So these one-liners are from the Book of Proverbs, but at least it illustrates the patterns. Okay? So now what I'd like to do is, we're just going to take Psalm one. I'm going to use Psalm one a couple of times. So we're just going to look at it. Okay? So we see, we'll see first of all, the synonymous parallelism. "Blessed indeed is the man who follows not the counsel of the wicked, nor stands in the way of sinners, nor abides in the company of scorners." Can you see the parallelism? That, now, also there's an increasing degree of cooperation with the sinner, but it's also, what we see here is the parallelism, right? And you can see the rhythm going on and the building that's going on using the parallelism. Now, if you also look at the first line and the last line, what do you see? "Blessed indeed is the man who follows not..." Okay? So blessed indeed is the man who's just. Look at the last line, "but the way of the wicked perishes." Can you see that there's an antithetical pattern going on between the beginning and the end? Okay? And in fact, if we look at verse six, we can see an antithetical positioning there too. "For the Lord knows the way of the just, but the way of the wicked vanishes." Okay? So these would be examples. And then, if you want to see the synonymous, if you look at verse three, "He is like a tree that is planted beside flowing waters, that yields its fruit in due season." Again, they've got a synonymous parallelism. And then we see the completion with a synthesis, "whose leaves never fail, and all that he does prospers." Okay? So the just man is like the tree that is planted in, next to the waters of grace, if you would. He's, he's going to succeed. Okay? So there's just a quick, so you can see why, oftentimes it seems as if they're repeating themselves, or they're saying the same thing, but using different words. And it's kind of like, mhm, that's Hebrew parallelism. Exactly. Okay? So I, I hope that's helpful in kind of what's going on with the songs. I know some people, when they're praying the Liturgy of the Hours, says, "I just don't get this. What's going on? Why are they talking about, you know, trees and water and..." As well, it's part of the, the rhythm of the actual poetry, but also there's spiritual meaning there. Like, for example, the word planted near running waters, it can also be transplanted. And if you think about our baptism, you know, we are transplanted into the living water of Christ. Okay? So it has spiritual meanings and deeper meanings as you get into it and actually pray it. Okay? So now let's go back to where we were. Okay? Now, there's also another literary forms. We're going to see that there are basically five kinds of songs. And the majority of them are actually going to be the laments. Either the, they'll be personal laments or the entreaties of an entire nation. So personal and national. Okay? So our first is the hymns. And these, I have the numbers up there if you wish. Eight, nineteen, twenty-nine, thirty-three, forty-six through forty-eight, seventy-six, eighty-four, et cetera. Do I really need to read all those? Probably not. Okay? And then you'll notice that one forty-five to one fifty is like the grand finale. Okay? So what is the pattern that we're going to see in every hymn? Now, I won't say that it follows exactly this, but you'll find these elements in the hymns somewhere. Okay? So first will be the invitation to praise God. And this could be as simple as the opening word will be, hallelujah. So Hallel means praise, and Yahweh means the Lord, right? Is the, or it's circumlocution is the Lord. Okay? So praise the Lord. Okay? Hallelujah. And then there will be the motives for praise. So if we take the very simple hymn of Psalm one hundred seventeen, "Hallelujah! Praise the Lord, all you nations; acclaim him, all you peoples." Why? "For strong is his love for us, and he is faithful forever." Hallelujah! Okay? So we can see the, then there's a repetition of, a command to praise God. Okay? So a real simple pattern there that we see. Okay? So that would be the hymns. And then, as I said, the majority of these are going to be entreaties or laments. Okay? And did I just, it just went all the way through it? Or you saw all of them at once, instead of one by... Okay? Now they're coming up one at a time. Okay? So the first one would be an invocation of God, calling upon God, like, "Oh, God, help." Okay? So, or it might be avenging God, avenging God a beer. Give those, okay. There, by the way, there are impregatory or cursing songs, which I don't know if I like it or not. I can, I can understand why the people who modified or updated the office, the Liturgy of the Hours, they took out the impregatory songs. And they also edited out any curses that were in the songs that are in the book. Now, God realizes that the Book of Songs, in one sense, covers the whole gamut of human emotions, including being mad enough to be cursing. Okay? So, but I can also see that it could be very confusing and disturbing to people who are praying the offices, bash the baby's head against the wall. Ah, why am I praying this? You know? So you can see why the decision was made. At the same time, it's kind of a, a little bit of an impoverishment, I think. But it's in there. If you, if you, I know of one Irish community I heard of that, "We're going to go pray the impregatory songs. You want to join us?" type of thing. Okay? I guess they were really angry about something. I don't know. But I guess they thought it was, you know, part of what they should pray. But always to understand that whenever there is anything like, you know, make the wicked vanish, or, you know, make them disappear. If we look at it not as physical human enemies, but as sin and the devil, then it starts to make more sense. Okay? So first of all is the invocation of God. And it can be as simple as, "Oh, God, please come." Okay? The second one is an appeal of help or an expression of confidence. You know, "You, oh, oh, God, you have been there in the past for us. Be here with us now." Okay? Or something like that. And then it will have a description of what's misfortune. Like, "The waters are up against my, my neck. My feet are sinking in the mud. You gotta help me." Okay? So, or, "People are being unjust to me," or whatever it is. It depends upon the psalm. And then it's a reminder of God, of his past mercies, or reproaching him for his seeming absence. So it's like, "God, where are you? Please, help." Okay? "Don't you remember you've been here in the past? You know, this is what causes me sorrow, that the way of the Lord has changed." But right after that, we have, again, an expression of confidence that God will hear the prayer. Okay? But nevertheless, so, "Foundation is once destroyed; what will the just do? While God is still in this heaven." Okay? So throughout the Psalms, it's kind of this, well, it's the battle of prayer, right? That struggle for, "Why does God let this evil happen? Please help us, Lord," and things like that. So, and as you pray the office, or what I was formed with, is as we pray the liturgy, sometimes we are jubilant and we are praying, and sometimes we're the ones in trouble. But, you know, if we're not troubled right now, somebody is, and they need that prayer. Okay? So that idea of the prayer of the whole body of Christ. Okay? So those are the entreaties. And as you can see, there's collective ones where the whole, the whole people are praying to God for help. And then the individual laments. And these would include like the penitential Psalms, like the Psalm fifty-one. That is usually the opening prayer for Friday, which right now slipped my mind. Maybe you can help me? Or I can look it up really quick. Hold on a second. I'll be right there. I have the complete revised Grail Salter, thanks to one of my sisters who took a song class this summer. And I was kind of like, oh, come on. Well, it's taking its sweet time. Okay? Here we go. Let me see if I can find it quickly. Fifty-one. Okay? No. Oh, goodness. Are we gonna, oh, here we go. "Have mercy on me, God, according to your merciful love, according to your great compassion. Blot out my, you know, blot out my offense. Wash me from my iniquities and cleanse me from my sins." Okay? So it's, this is the revised version that's going to, when they republish the, when they finally get it all done and republish the Liturgy of the Hours, this is the translation they'll be using. Okay? So, "Have mercy on me, God, in your kindness and your compassion; blot out all my offense," et cetera. Okay? So that would be a classical example of the entreaty. Okay? Now, the third kind is very similar to the hymn. And this would be the Thanksgiving hymn. So again, instead of invitation of praise, it'll be an invitation to thank. And again, I believe it's Psalm one hundred eight that is the kind of a litany of Thanksgiving, right? So, is that up there? Excuse me, it's Psalm one hundred eighteen. Okay? So a litany of praise. "Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good; for his mercy endures forever. Give thanks to the God of gods, for his mercy endures forever." Okay? So it's kind of a litany of all the mercy that God did for the people of Israel. And then there will be a repetition of invitation to praise God or to thank God. Okay? So usually there'll be an hallelujah sprinkled in there too. Okay? All right? So those would be the majority of the songs. Would be these three, the hymn, the entreaty, and then the Thanksgiving hymns. So those are the majority of them. But on top of that, there are some exceptional songs. And in fact, Psalm one is one of these exceptional songs. So I don't want to rush you. I see a lot of these still writing, so let's do a little pause. Okay? So our next kind is going to be known as the exceptional or composite hymns, or Psalms. So first, the didactic or teaching songs. And we see Psalm one as very much an example of that. Okay? So it is the two ways, right? There's the way of the sinner, and then there's the way of the righteous man. "Happy the man who follows not the counsel of the wicked, who walks in the way of sinners, nor sits with those, the scorners; but whose delight is the law of the Lord, who meditates on his law day and night. He is like the tree planted near running waters." So you have the just man rooted in the word of God. And then you have the wicked man who is like winnowed chap that owes dust and wind. He has no roots. He's just at the mercy of whatever's for fashion right now. Okay? And thus, the, the just man will stand before God, but the wicked will not be able to stand. So, and you see this theme throughout the scriptures. Like Psalm seventy-three is, "Lord, why do the wicked prosper? Why are our days towering in strength?" And seventy-three is an interesting psalm, because it's kind of a heastic, as in it's going to cross. So at first, it's the problem of evil, right? Why does the wicked man prosper? Why is there not, why can't he say, "There is no God; they give way with it"? You know? And then, in the middle of the psalm, he's saying, "And I almost fell because of this," right? "And then I understood your wisdom." Because the wicked are basically on the slippery slide to, to help. Right? They seem to be successful. They draw a lot of people after them. But in actual fact, it's only illusion. Right? It's, they're going to slide to their doom. And so it is good to be just, right? So there's that conclusion in seventy-three. Okay? So the didactic hymns then, or didactic songs. And we see Psalm one again, the way, the two ways. Psalm one hundred twenty-seven, "Unless the Lord builds the house, those who labor build in vain; unless the Lord guards the city, those who guard labor in vain." In other words, all of our works are really nothing without God. It's kind of echoed with Jesus spying the vine near the branches. You need me to do anything. Okay? So those would be some examples. And then the other kind would be oracles or prophetic songs. And we can see sometimes the Book of Songs is telling us, foretelling the future even more clearly than some of the prophetic books. Like, for example, Psalm twenty-two, "My God, my God, why have you abandoned me?" If you continue to read that psalm, it's kind of like, "They tear holes in my hands and my feet. I can count on my bones. My, my heart is like wax in my chest. My, my throat is like harsh clay." That is describing a crucifixion. It's exactly, and by the way, when the Jews would say the first line of something, they intended the whole psalm to be re- collected. So Jesus says on the cross, "My God, my God, why have you abandoned me?" Now, that could be a whole discussion. Is, is David, it's almost like David is witnessing the crucifixion of Jesus. So is it that Psalm twenty-two records, if you would, David's prophetic vision of Jesus saying it? Or is Jesus quoting Psalm twenty-two to say, "Here's the fulfillment?" And I say, "Yes." Okay? Psalm twenty, now Psalm two is, as I said, we read it with Psalm one. And it's about, the Messiah is going to be opposed by the Gentiles, right? So God's established as king, and yet there are those who conspire against him, and yet he's going to prevail. And we see that is going to be quoted in the Acts of the Apostles. Okay? Peter himself quotes Psalm two. So the idea of very much seeing the, who is the just man? Who is this blessed man who follows not the counsel of the wicked, the sinner, son of God? Who, in Psalm two, is opposed, and yet will ultimately be victorious. Okay? So the Christian reading of those songs would be that they are prophetic, not just didactic. Okay? Psalm one hundred and ten, "You are a priest forever, according to the order of Mount Pisa." Obviously referring to Jesus. And you see in the Letter to the Hebrews, commentary of that, talking about, what is the priesthood of Mount Pisa? The unending priesthood, not the priesthood of the Aaronic priesthood, which is passed down by heredity, but rather appointment by God. And that also kind of fit with Daniel talking about the son of man coming down from heaven. So there's all kinds of connections between the songs and the other books. Okay? Now, I don't have time to go through everybody, but I hope I gave you some samplings of prophetic. Okay? And a lot of these songs, as I say, Psalm eighty-eight, even though I don't have it here, that psalm, very, very dark. As I say, it's the one psalm that does not end with an expression of confidence. And it is kind of seen as that abandonment of Christ at the crucifixion. Okay? Now, I kind of already, so if we look at, let's look at some specialized Psalms now. And I've kind of already dealt with quite a few of these. But the royal messianic Psalms would be Psalms that would have been sung at coronations of kings of Judah. Okay? And they would especially have to do with David's prophecy that the eternal dynasty promised to David, "Fulde deur till the end of time." And of course, the full covenant of that is in Jesus. We also see the Songs of the Temple. So these would be the, the songs that would have been sung. So here, I have this, here, maybe I can even enlarge this. This is a model of the temple. It's in, it's a hotel in Jerusalem, but they have tenth, the size model. And so I hope you can see it. We, this is the courtyard of the women right here. And then this would be the temple. And this area right in here would be the courtyard of Israel. So the sons of Korah that I was referring to, the Levitical choir, would be standing on these steps, singing the songs while the sacrifice of incense was being offered inside the Holy of Holies. So all the Jews, the women as well as the men, could gather in the courtyard of the women and here, join in on the singing of God's praises. And these would be, these, these would be the Psalms that would be used. Okay? So then you have the Songs of Ascent that I was already talking about. This would be Psalms one hundred and twenty to one hundred and thirty-four, that would be sung by the pilgrims. "I rejoice when I heard them say, 'Let us go to the house of the Lord; and now our feet are standing within your gates of Jerusalem.'" Okay? So these would be the songs that the pilgrims would sing. Now, it's interesting, in the old Mass, these are also the songs that the priest would sing, or I should say say, recite on his way up to the altar as well. Okay? So the songs, as you know, are part of the Mass or the Eucharistic Liturgy as well as the Liturgy of the Hours. Okay? So, and this has been true, I mean, the earliest Christian writings, you're going to find quotations of the Psalms and the use of the songs throughout the Protestant Church. So you know that it was being prayed and used by Christians as well as Jews in this time period. And in fact, that's where we're going to go from here, is into the spiritual value of the Psalms. And as you know, we share this with our Jewish brethren. Although, of course, our praying the Psalms is going to look a little different than the Jewish, because, of course, we are praying it as Christians. The Messiah has come. It's not, "He will come, he has come." And so, that is why there's also the tradition of the Docsality, Docology, or "The glory be to the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit" at the end of each of Psalms, in the recitation of the Psalms in Christian prayer. Okay, so we, we would pray them as fulfillment, whereas the Jews would be praying them as still waiting. Although, if you consider Pope, Pope Trigand, Pope Benedict the Sixteenth talked about that the Jewish expectation of the coming of the Messiah coincides with our expectation of the second coming of Christ. So we can really say that we are praying in union with our older brothers in the Spirit. Okay? Because God never takes back a promise that he's made, so, to his people. So of course, we look at the Old Testament Liturgical Prayer. We've kind of already done that. We've got the temple liturgy, the sacrifice of praise accompanying the, the sacrifice in the temple itself. Especially the hinge hours of morning and evening sacrifice. We have the Songs of Ascent from the pilgrims as they go up to Jerusalem, quite literally, almost straight up, not quite, but you know what I mean. You also have the Passover Hallow. And you can see that if you read the Gospels of Matthew, Mark, and Luke, they mention how Jesus and his apostles sing the Hallow on their way out to Mount Olives. Okay, so they are, the synoptic gospels would present the Last Supper as a Passover meal, even to the recitation of the Hallow on their way out to the Garden of Gethsemane. Okay? And then, also, of course, the synagogue, which I haven't really talked about yet. So let's do that now. In the synagogue service, this would develop during the exile. Okay, so the temple's destroyed. They don't have anything left but for the word of God itself. And so, we have the whole rise of, synagogue originally meant gathering place. So it's that idea of gathering first by a river, because they were too poor to have a building. And what would they do? And they would come together on the Sabbath morning as the rabbi or teacher would be reading the, the books of the Bible. And the people would be praying the Psalms together as part of that. And in fact, the synagogue liturgy looks, in many ways, very similar to our own. And the reason is, of course, is our liturgy is kind of based on that Hebrew liturgy. Okay? The Ammeh, they have a lectionary, which includes the entire reading of the Torah and the prophets throughout year. And like our own Mass, only the Koheney, or Jewish priests, as in descendants of Aaron, could read the Torah during the synagogue service. And then, you'd have the cantor doing the hymns. And then, the, the rabbi would be reading the scripture, the, the, the prophets. And by the way, the bar mitzvah, what's a bar mitzvah is, the boy has learned how to read and proclaim the word of God in Hebrew, and he gets to read the prophets. And if he's a son of Aaron, at his bar mitzvah, he'd be reading the Torah. Okay? And then, the rabbi would be, usually, this would be proclaimed in the original Hebrew. And then, a targum, which would be both an impromptu translation into the language of the people with a sermon. Okay? Does it sound familiar? Yeah? Okay, so they would be singing the Psalms as part of their synagogue liturgy. Now, also on top of that, there's the family liturgy on the Sabbath evening. So Friday evening with the, with the luchonarium or the lighting of the menorah, and the mother leading that, they would also be singing particular Psalms to usher in the Sabbath. So there's both the family liturgy happening, as well as the synagogue service on Sabbath morning. Okay? And we would say that that is going to be the origins of our own liturgy of the Word. Okay, now, we also see that it's obvious that the Psalms are the prayers of Jesus. We see him singing, or I should say, saying Psalm one hundred, excuse me, no, no. What did I say? Psalm twenty-two, "My God, my God, why have you abandoned me?" Right there on the cross. We see him singing the Hallow of his disciples. We see Mary. If you look at the, if you look at the Magnificat, I know it's often associated with the first Samuel reading of the Canticle of Hannah. But if you look at the Magnificat, and you are familiar with the Psalms, you can pick out the themes. You can tell that Mary has prayed the Psalms, and that that's part of her language of prayer as she prays her, as she prays her Magnificat. Okay? You can also see it with Zechariah's hymn in the Gospel of Luke. But he is definitely drawing on the Psalms as he sings his hymn of praise, as he recovers his voice for the rest of his life, John the Baptist. Okay? And then, of course, as we've already started to mention, is the Psalms are part of the official prayer of the church. Both are Mass prayers, the Liturgy of Eucharist, as well as the Liturgy of the Word. Now, of course, we're all familiar with the responsorial song between the first reading and the, and the second reading. But if you, if you look at the Mass, if you're familiar with the Psalms, if you pray the Psalms, then you can pick out the quotations of the Psalms throughout the Eucharistic prayer. It's just one big issue of, of, well, all sorts of Scripture readings, but the Psalms do predominate. The language of the Eucharistic prayer is also very influenced by the Psalms as well. And then, of course, what do you think of, what do you think of Psalms in Christian prayer? Liturgy of Hours, right? So we see that. And then, of, of course, the other rites and the sacraments, you'll find Psalms are part of the Liturgy of the Word for all the sacraments. And now, we're going to look in a little bit more detail into the structure of the Liturgy of the Hours, which is where we pray the Psalms regularly. Now, that can be a whole different class, is the history of the development of the Liturgy of the Hours. But suffice it to say that the early desert fathers would say the entire psalter every day. Wow! I tried to do that once. We did a Psalm retreat where we recited all the Psalms in one day. We basically had time to eat, and to go to the bathroom, and that was it. Okay? Didn't get anything else done that day, except for reading the Psalms. So I don't know how the desert fathers did it, unless they, they probably had it committed to memory since they were saying it every day. And they did do things like they had pedals to keep track, which, by the way, is the origin of using these to count prayers that we have in the rosary. Or they would like, keep their hands busy by weaving baskets or something while they were praying to, you know, keep awake and, or keep going. The, the legend of it is that Saint Patrick, when he was evangelizing in Ireland, that he said that the entire psalter twice a day. And I don't know how he did it. He must not sweat, is all I can say. Okay? But he prayed it once throughout the day. And then, at evening, he would pray again. The first fifty, he would pray standing. The second, he would pray with his hand, arms up. And the third, he would walk into the icy water and pray the fifty, the last fifty. He's kind of like, "Oh, my gosh." That includes Psalm one hundred and nineteen, but also one hundred and seventeen. But still. In fact, that that would be the origin of what is called the Noitiu Koiket, or the three fifties, which is also referring to the rosary. So, but that, again, is another talk. Okay? So here is the plan of the divine office as it is set today. Now, it did go through, instead of one hundred and fifty Psalms a day, we start to see Saint Benedict break it out into a week. Okay, so one hundred and fifty Psalms within a week. And something similar happening in the Byzantine liturgy, where they would split it up over, and I believe they still do it, over a one-week period. Now, with the revisions of Apokyn two, we see the psalter being spread out over a four-week period. And so, this is the plan up here. Now, this only has the Psalms. It does not have what's been added to spread one hundred and fifty Psalms over four weeks. What's been added is Old Testament and New Testament canticles. So in the morning prayer, you will have two Psalms, or a section of one Psalm, two sections of one Psalm, with an Old Testament canticle. And then, the evening prayer would be two Psalms or parts of a Psalm, and then, a New Testament canticle. Okay? And then, of course, the canticles of Mary, Simeon, and Zechariah are every day. So we have the Magnificat, the Benedictus, and the Dementus. And that's been traditional from the beginning. Now Benedict, what he did is, they said the same Psalms every day for the night prayer. And so, it'd be the other things that cycled through. Okay? So if we look here, it, it might look very complicated in one sense. It is. Oh, and by the way, here are the, these are the Psalms not included. These are the cursing songs. So if you want to know, tell them. Sorry, I teach, I teach, you know, I teach high school students. As soon as you say it's excluded, guess where they're going to go? Okay, so if you're wanting to know. It's fifty-eight, eighty-three, one hundred and nine. And now, ninety-five is not a cursing song. The reason it's not included in the cycle is because it's said every day. It's the invitative. Okay? So this is the opening Psalm for every day, is ninety-five. And don't ask me what it is at this moment, because I would have to look it up. As soon as you start it, let's see. "O Lord, open my eyes, and my mouth shall pray your praise. O, I worship you." "Come, let us worship the Lord, and shout the joy to the rock of his name." Okay, that's, that's Psalm ninety-five. Okay? So now, if you look at it, each hour has its own tone. So morning prayer is, you know, you're waking up, you're asking God to bless the day, right? So the petitions of the Liturgy of the Hours are going to be, "Help us through the day, you know, support us. Give us the grace to carry through the day and be faithful to you." Okay? Midnight prayer, this midday moment of rest is yours. "You're welcome again," etc. We see evening prayer starts to be Thanksgiving, so lots of hymns. "Thank you for the lessons of this day." And then, night prayer is that we're going to bed, yes, but it's also the reminder of, "Sunday, we're going to die and be judged." So that's very much the, not just the closing of the day, but remembering that, "Sunday, I'm going to die and be judged," that type of thing. And then, of course, the Liturgy of the Hours is usually more of what we call didactic. In other words, it's, they're lessons to nourish the spiritual life and stuff like that. Okay? So each one of them have their flavors. And again, if you'll notice, let's see, night prayer, is that? I only see evening prayer. But, oh, here it is. Night prayer, if you look at the bottom, it's going to be the same Psalms during the week. Okay, so if you look down here at the bottom, you see Psalm ninety-one for Sunday, eighty-six. And then, please note here for the night prayer on Friday is eighty-eight, the one that ends with, "My, my only companion is darkness." Because we're, you know, in the tomb, if you would, with Christ. You'll also notice Psalm one hundred and nineteen is on every day of the week. Okay, maybe not Sunday, but every other day of the week, if you look at, so, and if you look at your Liturgy of the Hours, you'll see it'll say. So where is it? Monday? I guess it starts here on Tuesday, first week. Uh-oh, did I just do? I don't know. So if you notice Psalm one hundred and nineteen, so Tuesday of the first week, if you look there, it will actually say Elif. Okay? And then, the next day will be Beth, Gimel, Down, etc. And then, you'll notice that it also, one hundred and nineteen, there are certain parts of one hundred and nineteen that will be repeated a couple times outside of the midday prayer. But it usually is, it is the prayer for midday. Okay? And what we see in the day is, what is one hundred and nineteen really about? The whole thing is meditation on the law. So the just man meditates on the law of the Lord day and night. And so, Psalm one hundred and nineteen is a prolonged meditation on the law of God and how it justifies us and supports us in our walk with God. Okay, so, and you can see that it, it is there throughout all four weeks of the psalter. Okay? And then, you'll notice, I did it again. Well, nothing happened, so I guess that's good. Okay, so as you'll notice here, Psalm one hundred and nineteen, verses one forty-five to one fifty-two, are repeated a couple times in the psalter. So not just once. And then, I think it's also, there's another section, although I'm not finding it readily. But Psalm one hundred and nineteen really is every, almost every day of the psalter. Okay? Now, this is, of course, not looking at all the other Old Testament canticles and things. Okay? So just really quick, I'm going to like skip through just three Psalms. So Psalm one, if we look here, so this is the opening Psalm. Again, the two ways, "Happy the man who follows," or blessed is the man who follows not the counsel of the wicked, but whose delight is meditation on the law of the Lord, rooted like a tree in the waters of God's grace, stands firm despite whatever happens to him. Okay? As opposed to the wicked, who have no roots and easily swayed by anything that happens, they quickly wilt and are blown away. So that whole idea of, like Moses would say in the Book of Deuteronomy, "I place before you life and prosperity, death and doom. Choose life that you may live and prosper in the land." Okay, so that whole, if you would, theme of wisdom. And then, let's look at Psalm one hundred and forty-nine. So this would be, this would be morning prayer, Sunday one. Okay, so it's, we have the, now, if you looked at it, where was Psalm one? Office of Readings, Sunday one. So in other words, these two, in the psalter, these two Psalms are actually juxtaposed. If you do Office of Readings before you do morning prayer, you're starting with the first one. And then, the morning prayer, you're, you're seeing, if you would, the church is showing you the connection. Okay? So in this last one, it's a hymn of praise. So after all the trials of life, what do we see? Is the just man is victorious, right? So hallelujah, sing a new song to the Lord, his praise in the assembly of the faithful. Remember how the just, the just stand in the assembly, but the wicked can't stand with them, right? So, "Let Israel rejoice in its maker; let Zion's sons exult in their king; let them praise his name with dancing, and make music with timbre and harp; for the Lord takes delight in his people; he crowns the poor with salvation." So the poor, just man who's been faithful. "Let the faithful exult in glory, and shout with joy, and take their rest, that eternal rest in heaven." Right? So the just man's reward. "Let the praise of God be in their mouth, and a two-edged sword in their hand." Now, if you, if you consider that Psalm one and two are a unit, and by the way, Psalm two is right after Psalm one in the Office of Readings. It talks about, even though the Messiah is persecuted and put down, God will make him victorious. Okay? And so, we see here, the two-edged sword. If you go to the Book of Revelation also, what do you find? Is, how does Jesus defeat the Antichrist? With the sword of his mouth, right? The two-edged sword. Okay, so the whole idea of the just man is victorious in the Lord. And so, to deal out vengeance to the nation and punish Manol peoples, to bind the kings in chains and their nobles in fetters of iron, to carry out the judgment preordained, this is the honor of the faithful. Hallelujah! Okay, so if you would, the opening Psalm, you put closure in the end. But the church actually puts the two together, so you get the connections. Okay? Now, let's, I've been referring to Psalm eighty-eight, so let's look at it. Okay? This is Friday night prayer. You know, "My one companion is darkness." Okay, so, "O Lord and God of my salvation, I cry before you day and night. Let my prayer come into your presence." Oh, turn your ear to my cry. I'm sorry, I'm used to the old one. "For my soul is filled with evils, and my life is on the brink of the grave. I am reckoned as one in the tomb. I have reached the end of my strength, like one among the dead, like the slain lying in their graves, like those you remember no more, cut off as they are from your hand. You have laid me in the depths of the tomb, in the regions that are dark and the deep. Your anger weighs down upon me; I am drowned beneath your waves. You have taken away my friends; to them you have made me hateful; imprisoned, I cannot escape. My eyes are sunken with grief. I call to you, Lord, all day long; to you I stretch out my hands." So you do see the confidence is there. But it's also, "Where are you?" Yes? "Will you work your hand wonders for the dead? Will the shades rise up to praise you? Will your mercy be told in the grave, or your faithfulness among the dead? Will your wonders be known in the dark, or your justice in the land of oblivion? But you, but I, O Lord, cry out to you; in the morning my prayer comes before you. Why do you reject me? Why do you hide your face? I am wretched, close to death from my youth; I have borne your trials; I am numb. Your fury has swept down upon me; your terrors have utterly destroyed me. They surround me all the day like a flood; together they close in on me. Friend and neighbor, you have taken away; my one companion is darkness." Does this sound like Jesus in the tomb? Yeah? The, the agony of the garden. And so, we see that, that passion. And in fact, Saint Ambrose, I believe, says that this is the clearest of, if you would, prophecy of the passion, is dereliction of Christ on the cross. Okay, so, yes. So David has definitely felt the nutter of, of the depths of his sin. And yet, what do we see is, the resurrection also comes with that. Okay, so. Sorry, maybe I shouldn't have been on, it was a really depressing one. But remember, there is the vindication that we see in Psalm one hundred and forty-nine to one hundred and fifty. So one hundred and fifty, pray, it's like, praise the Lord.